All right, the closed session has concluded. There was a motion in the closed session to close the closed session, and we are now back in regular city council meetings. Welcome back, everyone. Thank you. So with that, the city council previously determined that it was in the best interest of the city and its residents to retain an outside investigator to look at into the recent fraud that targeted the city. The investigation has been completed, and it has been determined that no city policies were violated. Unfortunately, this incident is yet another example of the increased increasing cybercrime that is incurring all over the world. While the law enforcement investigation continues, the city council remains dedicated to ensuring that the city of mayor remains a fantastic place to live and work, and that our tax dollars are managed in a responsible manner for the benefit of all our residents. So with that, we will move to city council reports. Councilmember Wagner, anything to report on?
I attended the Mayor Rising Community Festival on Saturday. There seemed to be a good turnout. Thank you to the Stifter family and other committee members for another great event.
For councilmember Ely, anything to report on?
Yeah, I did the parks meeting, and we're exploring options for pickleball during open gym hours. So I'll have more to come on that.
Wonderful. That'll be great. Councilmember McNeely?
Uh, nothing.
Councilmember Halt?
Nope.
And just a little bit on the Mayor Rising Community Festival, as councilmember Wagner had stated. Thank you to everyone. The committee was involved in it, all the volunteers, all the businesses supported it. It was a great event, great turnout. We had great weather. I believe they broke the record for the number of cars that showed up, so that was a great success. It was an all-around great event, so I want to thank everyone, and especially the community for coming and attending it. So with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in, oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Perfect. Thank you, Tim. With that, we will jump right into the budget workshop and call that to order. Tim, you want to get out of here?
Yes, I do want to get out of here.
I don't blame you.
We'll be in touch next call, so I think we're done.
All right, thank you, Tim.
See you later, Janelle.
See ya. Bye.
Fair fact. We got good templates, you just reused. Rest of it was good, though. All right, so we're going to have our first look at the 2024 budget. So what we're going to go over today is just a general schedule of the budget timeline, give everybody an idea of what we're going to be doing over the next handful of months as we hit December regarding the budget. We'll go over the major highlights proposed, over the major highlights proposed in the budget. We'll look at the first draft of the 2024 budget, and then we'll review initial long-term forecast, looking into the future just a little bit. So for an overview of the budget timeline, and I guess before we get too deep into it, so what I like to do as far as our budget workshops is this is not going to be a three-hour slog where everybody's brain melts and nobody remembers it a month later. We're going to break these up into, you can expect to have a budget workshop after every meeting, but we break this into small chunks, so that we take off. It should be less than an hour easily for all of these things, but we hit it multiple times. We make sure we're hitting our milestones as we discuss things, getting things done. So we're not just, I just don't like that two-hour format. It's way too much information to go over, and then to come back to it a month later. People just, nobody retains that kind of information. Then you end up rehashing a lot of stuff, which just makes the next session even longer. So we'll break it up into sections, and we'll get our work done that way. So overview of the budget timeline that we're going to be accomplishing here is July through September. We're going to be focusing on the general fund and the capital improvement program for 2024. The reason we want to do that is, as you can see on September 25th, we, by the end of September, we have to adopt our preliminary levy and budget. And why that's important is, under state law, it tells us we have to do it by September 30th, but when you set a preliminary levy, you can lower it, but you cannot raise it. So you want a lot of hard work upfront on the general fund, so you have really good numbers, so that anything you do after is a tweak. It's not major budget changes that's really going to throw off your levy or anything like that. If anything, you might be able to save a little, maybe bring it down in December, but in my ideal world, we hit the preliminary levy on the head, so that there is no change in December. That's always my goal. But that means we do a lot of the general fund up, fund work upfront, and then October through November, again, tweaks to the general fund, but then the focus shifts to the enterprise funds or the utility funds, water sewer and storm sewer. We'll hit those and put more focus on those. Because we have to have the preliminary levy adopted by September, but since the utility funds are on a monthly cash basis, the more months we get in a year, the more data we have on revenues and expenditures, and that lets us dial in right up to December about what those should really look like to give us as tight a budget as we can for the following year. So the more data we get, the better, obviously. And then on December 11th, we will have our truth and taxation public hearing, and then we would adopt our final levy and budget. All goes well. It's the exact same as preliminary, because we've hit that on the head and done the due diligence. We have the one meeting in December. We don't do the second meeting, because that generally falls on the holidays, and actually, this year, it falls on Christmas. So we just have that one meeting in December, and we want to have the budget ready to go for December. We're not having a workshop in December. We're bringing it to the meeting as a final product. So we've looked at it for months now. We like where everything's at. The budget's fleshed out, so when it hits December 11th, it's motion, second, pass, budget's done for the next year. So a little bit more in detail on that. Oh, really? It's not going to do that, huh? All right, there we go. So this is a little bit more of a detailed schedule on what we're looking at. As you can see there, first look tonight, preliminary long-term forecast, highlights of things. A lot of general fund work, CIP work, as we put all that together. September 25th, adopting that preliminary levy and budget, and then we switch, enterprise becomes focus, with general fund still making tweaks, and then more work on the CIP end of things. And then there on December 11th with the public hearing, and then the final adoption. So that's, that's our meeting dates, a little bit more broken out. There might be tweaks to this that we throw in or take out, depending on how well things go, but this is generally the schedule we look at. So what I want to start off with, as we go through the first look of the 2024 budget, and I guess at this point, we'll go, we'll switch through, we'll go to spreadsheets, we'll be looking at things. The intent is that this is our starting point. These numbers, a lot of them are going to change. They're going to tweak, maybe not a ton, but if you see something and you're like, holy cow, I can't believe that, don't freak out. This is our starting point. This is going to be a fluid document that we build up to and put into a final product later on. With that, my budgeting philosophy on things tends to be revenues. I like to be a little on the under, and expenditures a little on the long, just that if things go well, your budget's sitting very pretty, but if you have things go the wrong way for whatever reason, because budgets are guidelines, they're our best predictions of how the year is going to go, but nobody has a crystal ball. So that allows for a little, a little bit of cushion here and there, just in case things come up. But ideally, that should be hitting right on the head. As far as, I lost my train of thought here. So we'll jump into some of the major revenue highlights for the general fund. So some of the things on the, and I'll split this up between revenue and expenditures, just so we have both sides of the budget, going down all the major funds. So with the general fund, there was an increase to local government aid, that's LGA, that's the state funding we get every year. That represents 40 to 50% of our total revenues. That got an increase, an extra 80 million was put in the total pot, and then that gets split between all the eligible cities. Our share of that going into next year will be a $94,754 increase to our current. They had also allocated funding to the small cities transportation account, and that's permanent funding, but they haven't given the broken down numbers yet of what each smaller city is going to get. So a little bit of background on this, there is the MSA account, which is the municipal state aid account, and if you're a city of 5,000 or more, you get access to that funding, and that funding is used to then repair roads within your city. You designate which streets are MSA roads, and then you can use pots of money to go ahead, estate pots of money that you get, and you can use that to improve your roads. Cities under 5,000 don't get that funding. In recent years, there have been one-time allotments into the account, and cities have gotten a little bit of money from that. So this is the first time there's been permanent funding allocated towards smaller cities to get that, like ours. So that'll be nice to get. That's something we can talk about having. It's intended to be used for roads, so that could be something we add to our street CIP to increase the amount of money we can do for seal codes and milling overlays in the future. We'll talk about that in the future.
Oh, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
We ask questions now, or you want us to wait till the end?
Ask questions now?
Okay.
But I may say, we'll cover that later, or we can hit that now.
So do you have any timeline as to when they will provide estimates? I mean, we'll have them by September?
Yeah, I would think.
Or they're just going to be a bonus at the end of the year?
No, they should have them out sooner rather than later. They know cities need to budget for this stuff.
Okay.
So they just haven't given us, the Department of Revenue just hasn't said, here's your breakdown, like they have for the LGA.
Okay.
But I, yes, we should have that before September, for sure, so we can allocate that properly.
Okay.
I haven't included any number in our budget for the small cities transportation account funding, just because I don't know what that's going to be. It could be 5,000, it could be 50,000. I don't have a clue. So with big unknowns like that, I just like to leave it empty until I get some more, something more concrete. An update on the Economic Development Authority levy. So digging into it further, the Economic Development Authority cannot levy their own funds. Bit more background on this is in-state statute, you have generally two that cities deal with. It's an EDA, it's an HRA. An EDA is the Economic Development Authority. The HRA is a Housing and Redevelopment Authority. And HRA does have the power to levy their own funds. An EDA does not. However, an EDA, whenever you create an EDA or HRA, you have an enabling resolution, and the enabling resolution spells out the authorities that it has given under state statute. If an EDA is given the authority of an EDA and an HRA, but it's just an EDA, it can levy funds. If the EDA only has the power of an EDA, it cannot levy funds. Our EDA is just an EDA, so it cannot levy its own funds. So even if they had gone through the process properly last year, they would have run into this roadblock, and it would have shut the whole thing down. So the question becomes, okay, they can't levy, but the EDA still wants to have funds, because they want to do business grants to the community and help people, help the business community do things and prosper and do better. Okay, how do you, how do you get around that? Well, the typical mechanism that cities use is that if the EDA can't levy funds on its own, the city simply levies it and then gives it to the EDA. So what that functions as is you, instead of having a line item on your property tax statement that the EDA is taxing X amount of dollars, it's just rolled up into the city's amount. The taxpayer doesn't pay any more or less on the property taxes, whether it's split out on its own or it's included in the city, it's the same dollar amount. So the mechanism that council can consider is, instead of the 50,000 being on its own, you roll it up into the general fund levy, and then, once you get those funds, you transfer it to the EDA.
Is there also an option to do a resolution to give the EDA power or authority?
So what you can do is, you can amend the enabling resolution to adopt additional powers. So yes, that can be done, but that, we'd have to go through that process, and we don't have enough time by the time we need to set a preliminary levy to transfer the funds to do that. So the easiest mechanism is just the city to decide whatever amount that is. I've picked 50,000, because if an HRA, I think it was 0.01815%, something like that, is of the market value of the city, they can levy as an amount, so it's a levy limit. It's a percentage of the total market value of the city they can levy. And if they had levied in 2023, it would have been 51,000 and change. So that's where I selected the 50,000 from, to give it that ballpark favorite. Now, if it's 50, if it's 40, it's really, really whatever the council wants it to be, because you're the ones granting those monies or transferring those monies to the EDA. But I want to give an update on that situation, and the EDA will learn that at their next meeting. And then, generally speaking, I moved a bunch of items to fit into better categories as things were coded, just to make them have a little bit more sense on the revenue side. The thing that I forgot that I remembered is, generally speaking, as we look at the budget, since we have contracts with the union for wage increases, and we know what payroll expenses are going to be, we have an idea what healthcare costs are look like. There are some costs in here that are going to just be adjusted across the board. Those personnel costs, some of those other fixed costs that we know what they're going to be, those have been updated throughout the budget as well. So I won't necessarily continually hit on those as why those have been adjusted, but I may go into a little bit more detail on the expense side of how they were adjusted for that. So those are the major revenue highlights on that. So we'll just take a little bit of a peek here. So this is my spreadsheet of the 2024 budget you have here. Column B will be what was budgeted in '22, C is '23, D is '24, and E is going to be the difference between '24 and '23. So you can see here, for general property taxes, for example, it went down $2,687. So that gives you an idea of how that adjusted, and then on the right of that, I have some notes that I've cranked in there, just to give an idea. So a little quick focus here, just as we go along, I'll, at a different meeting, I'll go into far more in-depth on this, but we have these codes at the front of all these, of these general property taxes, all these descriptions. So I just want to go through real quick at a very high level what these numbers mean. They have structure, they have meaning, and I just want to give you the overhead, so that as we go through them, it makes a little bit more sense to you. So we use what's called a fund accounting system, and the funds are represented by those first three numbers. They will always be those first three numbers. 100 is general fund. Your CIP funds are going to be 400s. Your debt service are 300s. Your, I'm sorry, CIP is 200s, special revenue is 400s. 500 doesn't really get used. 600 is utility counts. That's why when we get to water sewer and storm sewer, water is 620, sewer is 640, storm sewer is 650. You'll see those numbers. 600 is for those enterprise funds, and that's the highest we go up to. The second set of numbers here, the 41,000, the five digits there, that represents the department code in the budget. They're always five-digit numbers. The first number signifies whether it's an asset liability revenue or an expenditure. 10,000 codes are assets, 20,000s are liabilities, 30,000s are revenues, and with the revenues here, that shifts to the third set of numbers. On the fourth, but the 40,000s generally represents expenditure department codes. So what, in our revenue codes that we have here, you would look at the third set. In revenues, you would apply that. See the 30,000, and as we continue to go down, all the revenue codes through there have 30,000 numbers. That represents revenues. Whereas if we go down just to here, it switches to a three-digit code, which represents expenditure codes. And each one of these expenditure, like 300 is professional services across the board. 301 is accounting and auditing and accounting G services. 303 is always engineering fees. 321 is always telephone. So with that, as we move forward, as you see those, helps that make a little bit more sense. So for our property taxes here, this is where I've included the 50,000 for the EDA levy. Alcoholic beverages, a dip down, because we adjusted our, just the amount that we're charging for licenses, so that's why you see a dip there. Building permits here was increased to 50,000, $10,000 increase. The lowest year that we've had recently for building permit revenues was $52,000. So I'm edging a little bit before that, because I'm conservative that way, and if it's above that, hey, great, we gained more revenue. But I don't want to guess that we're going to have more revenue, and if it falls short, say for 2022, it definitely fell short. I don't want to play this gap game, because we're, want to rely on those funds. Because if it goes over, hey, great, we have extra revenue, we can allocate that. We put in funding for animal license. Those are our chicken licenses that we get each year, but those weren't accounted for, so we put those in there. For state grants and aids, this amount, what this was, is this was draws on funding that were coming to the general fund as part of the water treatment plant project. We were drawing funds in, and they were getting transferred to the water fund. And this is where they were landing on the state grants and aids. Though those projects are over with, so we will no longer be receiving any of those funds. If we do get a state grant or aid, it'll come in, I don't want to use the word random, but it's hard to budget for those things, depending on what becomes available, what we try to go get. Again, if we get them, great, but if not, there's no loss there. For local government aid, there's your $94,000 increase that we have there. State police aid, this was moved, because 41,000 represents general government as a department code. That was moved down to 42,100. 42,100 is police, and since it's a police state aid, moving that to the correct department, so it gets coded proper. County grants here, this was increased by 4,000, because there was a grant that was not being in there. We actually get two grants from the county for this, and only one was being accounted for. So we get one for recycling, and we get one for the compost site grant. So this one, the 7,500 actually accounts for both of those grants. Charges for services, knock those out. It's too volatile to put a budget number in for. So if it's volatile, I really don't like putting numbers in. That's the same what I did for here, and zoning and subdivision fees. We don't know when somebody's going to come in and do that, so no reason to try to bank on something that may or may not materialize. This one here, state reimbursement for snow removal. This is when we plow the state highway, and they reimburse us for those, well, not plow haul, it's not plowing, it's hauling off, and they reimburse us for that. Some years, it's going to be higher than this. Other years, it's going to be low. We don't know, we don't ever know what the winter's going to be like, so you try to ride the average on that one. Compost site charges, this one here is, we get $2,500 from New Germany every year. They also get a compost site grant from the county, but they give 2,500 of it to us, because a lot of their residents come over and use our compost site, and they've been doing that for years. So that line item is why the 2,500 is in there. Community center rental, bump that back up, because we've been seeing more activity. Actually, five, we're already at a little over five grand right now in half the year. So this may get tweaked over time. We just want to be conservative with this stuff. As we go to interest earnings, bump that back up. We're doing much better on that, and as interest rates continue to climb, our money market investment rates are going to climb. So I think this is still even very low, but we'll easily make three grand. This number right here represents the 10% gambling proceeds that we received for 2023, so I just put that in, number in for 2024. This would be from the mayor baseball club, the monies that, the 10% they donate to us, that they're required to. It's the required donation. Antenna rent, I moved this away from, it was in 41,940, you can see there, and 41,940 is community center and city hall, but that represents the building. So 41,940 is more of the building, not necessarily operations. So since this is revenue from operations of it, moved it into 41,000, which is general government, similar to why we have community center rental in 41,000, even though we're renting the community center to get the money in. Same philosophy is that, putting the, this in here. So that shifted from here. You can see the antenna rent, that just went from here up to here. This one here, this is the, this was moved here from the above, the police state aid moved to here, and it was increased, because it's been under budgeted for a couple of years. 9,500 is where it should land. Now, again, this, this is one that might change as we talk about regionalization, because if we lower ours, we won't get as much back in this, but we'll save money on the back end. For fire contracts, I moved this 15,000 up into here. The fire truck fund is kind of a misnomer. What this actually did is it paid for part of the debt service on the fire trucks. So it's, this doesn't really go to a fire truck fund. It pays for bonds. So there really is no reason why we can't put it all up into fire contracts and be done with it, is what that's for. So that got moved up into here, and then it was adjusted for what the contracts actually will be in 2024. And this one right here, this is for fire department training reimbursement. This is the amount, the MBFTE, the Minnesota Board of Fire Safety Training. No, I got that wrong. But it's the Board of Fire and Safety Training. They have allocated $8,700 to us that we can use for fire training reimbursement. And that's the quick highlight of the general fund. I'll go faster on the expenditure side, just because there's a lot more on that. Talking so much, even Chad's thirsty. So I'll hit this real quick, so hopefully you can see this, so I don't have to flop back and forth. Major expenditure highlights in the general fund as we take the first look. We have that 50,000 pass through the EDA. That's the pass-through from the 50,000 on the revenue side. In our budget, we had department codes set up for city administrator. We had a department code set up for city clerk, deputy clerk. That's odd, as you should, they're department codes, not individual codes for people necessarily. So really, it should be city administration instead of city administrator. That's where you capture the total sum of that. That, and now that we have a third person in the office, I'm not going to create a whole new set of department codes for accounting clerk. This makes no sense whatsoever. So we rolled everything up into city administrator, and we're going to treat that as city administration for that. So those, you'll see those got all rolled up. There was an adjustment to my wage distribution. Not what I got paid, but how it gets distributed throughout the funds. So for example, the public works guys, they're split up 25% between streets, parks, water, and sewer. Janelle and Tracy, they're split a third to administration, a third to water, and a third to sewer. I'm 100% to administration, and even though throughout the year, I do work for the water and sewer funds, whether it be budgeting or working on projects or things like that. So it makes sense to have some of my time split out into the water and sewer funds, so they can help carry some of that load. So for that, I split out two months into water and two months into sewer. So about a third, so four months total, it's split between water and sewer, while the bulk of mine still remains in administration. So you'll see that proposed adjustment as well. I have kept in the 16% law enforcement services cost increase. That was originally budgeted 400 at the town cop model. Now, if we moved to regionalization, we could realize some savings, but again, I'm going to budget for worst-case scenario, and if we tweak later on, hey, great, we saved some money. There is also going to be a one-time para-fire payment in the amount of $39,528. And the reason for that is, is that, so the fire department is vested with para, and those investments are handled by the state board of investment. They took a 15% hit last year, and they need to make up for it. So they sent us a bill for $39,528 to make up the loss of investments that they suffered. We don't have a choice. We have to pay it. It's not a question. We just shove it in the budget and say thank you. So that is, that's a one-time, that's not multiple years, such as the one time, I guess.
So that has to happen in 2024?
Yes. They sent us the bill, because they realized the loss in 2022, and they closed their books, and they meted everything out. They figured it out in '23, and then they bill us, and we have to pay it in 2024. Thankfully, we've got $97,000 of increased LGA to help cover some of that. So that's, I wouldn't expect that for 2025 unless the state board of investment takes another really nasty hit in investments, but we'll cross that bridge when we get there. Another note is, I would like to condense a lot of the fire department codes, and you'll see that when we get to it. Really just condenses it, streamlines it, makes a lot more sense, because they don't need to be split out as much as they are. I've added in estimated cost for splash pad operations, and then a, there's a lot of account, department and account codes that we could look at potentially in activating. We just don't use them, or they haven't been used in many, many years, so there's no sense in keeping them on the books, because nothing goes in and out of them. So take a look at that. So take a look at that here. So starting the expenditures on, over on this way, bump that up a little more. So, excuse me, here we have general government, we have some adjustments here in a number of items. Right here is where we have the transfer to the EDA that was talked about. And that's the new number here and that's a transfer out, just as we had in on there. Council wages didn't change a whole lot. Administrator, this is where everything got rolled up from right here. So this is city clerk and this is where Janelle's would be and prior, this was where the administrator would be. So these got all vacated, as you can see here, we just deleted out the numbers and we rolled everything up into here. It's not a perfect one-to-one because some of my wages are proposed to be adjusted out to water and sewer. So you have some mitigating factors there. But essentially, city clerk, deputy clerk is rolled up into city administrator and that's just going to house it because you have this for other departments, streets is an example, parks and is an example where you have multiple employees in one department. And that's really what the structure should be, not individual positions spelled out in a budget. Boards of commissions, make that inactive, again, city clerk, since we won't be using it, you can make that inactive. Elections are adjusted for 2024, you'll see increases because we're going to be hiring election judges and putting on election in 2024. So those could back up. Assessment services is what we pay to Carver County for doing our assessments every year on our properties. Planning and zoning stays relatively the same, there are some account codes here related to personnel, since we contract that out, we could make inactive to shorten things up. Under computer, put a little bit more in software support as we start gearing up a little bit more. And at the next meeting, we'll have a security maturity assessment that I'll talk about. But great, in these years, they were on the under budgeted side and they were going over budget. So we're getting back up to where they ought to be with the services that are actually being used. Rather than be like, well, you're budgeting more, it's like, well, we've been spending more in 2022. It's just, we need to bring those up with the actual costs that we're looking at. Community centers, some changes here, you'll see here under capital outlay. This is one of the, one of the last capital outline, outlay items, we're getting out of the budget to take care of that. We had 50 grand a year, we just took it all out. And then when we go look at the long-term and look at the capital, you'll, I'll note where I shoved it back in there. When you build CIP funds and budgets, the idea is that you take the volatility of capital improvements out of the general fund and you stick them into the CIP so that the general fund should be purely operations. So the volatility of capital improvements, when you buy equipment, things like that, that's housed elsewhere. So it's not making your general fund revenues expenditures just up and down year after year. It gives it more stability is what it adds while still having very good accounting for what you're doing. So that's pulling that out and getting in, getting into CIP. Again, as talked about, kept in the 16% increase, so you're seeing a big jump there for police contract services. Fire protection is now where we get, and I'll zoom out a little bit. The ones in yellow would be added account codes. And these are standard account codes that we have within the accounting system, so it's not a big deal to add these in. But housing, everything under the fire department protection code, because that's where the bulk of things are. So we'll be adding those in and a lot of these ones you'll see next are rolling them up into the fire protection. So we, you'll see the 42,000, 42,000 represents public safety and 42,200 represents fire, whereas 100 is police. So you'll see a lot of 42,200 codes with digits. We have a $2,000 payment we make for a subscription that we have with the fire department, getting that rolled up. We have fire equipment and we don't use a ton of these codes really. So these we can roll on up into fire protection, things like motor fuels, repairs and maintenance that we already have elsewhere. Fire station, a lot of these can get rolled right up into fire protection because we already have some of these account codes. Plus, it's very easy to create new ones to count for them all. Then we have another one for fire department land and fire department truck payment that we don't use and fire relief association. A bunch of these, all of these department codes do not need to exist and they can be here. They could all be encompassed under one department code, the numbers all get rolled up. It's not that you're losing money, it's transferring all up so it can be managed under one department budget, rather than trying to go through multiple department budgets to figure that out. There's where you can see the one-time para-expense that we have coming up, that 39,000. This is where we just added in the numbers from before, WAFTA went to here. This was adjusted by, if you're curious, this is where Emily Volmer and her children's insurance get paid from because of her husband's death while on duty, that's where this line item comes out of. So you can get rid of all these and really shorten up the budget. Building inspection services, since we had a budgeted more for building permits, we have to budget a little bit more for building inspections commensurate with that. Civil defense, animal control, took that all out because we don't have any animal control expenses. We had monies budgeted, but they were never spent. Public works, here's one that could be made inactive because we have highway, streets and roads, which covers the bulk of it. In here, we have some adjustments we're looking at doing again, capital outlay, taking that out, getting that out of there, where it's been there in past years and getting it into a CIP fund, as we'll see. Ice and snow removal, again, we just hit averages of what we see. A bad winter, it's going to blow this out of the winter, a great winter, we're going to be under budget, we're going to be saving money. So you try to hit your averages and that's why you have decent, why you want to have good fund balances in your general fund. So you can have that ebb and flow and you're not.
It looks like everything is down one line.
Does it? Oh, so this is, so these two represent these two items, this is totals. I just don't write in total.
Okay, got it.
Yep, so that's there, that's there, that's total.
Oh, I get it, that's the title of the department.
Yep, that'll be the title of the department code and these are the individual line items for them. The line items will get the monies inside of them. Storm drainage, this is storm sewer, it's not needed anymore, we have established a storm sewer fund. So this got all moved to there last year and got emptied out. Street lighting, this is where we pay in utilities for street lighting each year. Maintenance building, this represents public works maintenance building, added a little bit more for electric and gas utilities since we're adding 4,500 square feet roughly. Parks and recreation are in the 45,000 account code and making adjustments there. Here's where added additional funds. Here was a splash pad and pavilion anticipated and then this is just covers more park board activities. So we have, we have a park CIP, but really that ought to be for improvements. That's for buying playground equipment or putting in a basketball court or a splash pad. We shouldn't be taking operational activities like, out of here, this is where they pay for music in the park or the Christmas event that they put on. Those are more operational, so those will come out of here versus a CIP fund. So keeping those true to each other. We can make, a lot of these, we can make inactive, baseball park hasn't been used in years because it's all rolled up into parks in general. We don't have other redevelopment or housing that's never been used. Economic Development Authority, that has its own fund. So they budget their own money, so that can be taken out of there and put into their fund. We don't use debt service, we don't use refuse collection for residents. We do have the compost site and that one we do use. This, you saw the 7,500 for the grant that we have. This is also money, the 7,500 we put aside for chipping the brush pile. This is actually going to be less than this, so this is not accurate, this will come down. Because we spent 7,500 this year because we had the grant money. So next year it won't be as much, that has to get adjusted. The rest of these don't get used, so with the preliminary numbers, we're looking at revenues over expenditures of 21,400. And again, we'll continue to tweak this as we hit final numbers and really dial this in as the time goes on. And to make sure we stay under an hour. We'll now hit the major highlights, the utility funds, they are much easier. General fund has a plethora of departments that it takes care of. Utility funds are way more straightforward, water is water, sewer is sewer, storm sewer is storm sewer. So their budgets are far easier. So major highlights in the water fund, we added penalties and interest collection because that wasn't accounted for before or budgeted for, even though we get that every year. We adjusted down the water area connection revenues just because we anticipate, again, with the building permit fees, the water area connection is when you have development come in. So we want to budget that on the low side and if we get more that comes in, hey, great. And then we added state fee collections, that wasn't accounted for before either. And then on the expense side, notice how we don't have two slides. On the expense side, it's reducing expenditures for water meters because that's, water meters are tied to the sack and whack fees. So if we're adjusting these down, we need to adjust how many water meters we're purchasing as well. So as we take a look at the water fund here, this is where the penalties and interest should go. And this is on the low side, we get about 10,000 in penalties and interest each year, or penalties and interest from late payments each year. Interest earnings is where we're at for our investments, so that's different than the interest you see up above here. Otherwise, adjusting that water connection fee amount down to what we're seeing in development rather than where it used to be when housing was really going down to, oh, if it picks up, hey, great, it'll be extra revenue over expenses, perfect. Also adding in, or this state, this, I'm sorry, this is that state connection fee, we collect this, but it wasn't budgeted for. And this is the line item it's been going into on our accounting software system, putting that number in there so it's reflected in the budget. Get down here, debt service in both water and sewer. We have debt service schedules that I simply plugged the numbers into because they're all accounted for. So small adjustment in the debt service there. This one covers the water treatment facility and its operations, adjustment for chemical costs. This one got moved down to system for telephone because that was more appropriate for what it represented. Electric utilities, gas utilities will stay relatively the same. State connection fee, this is about what we've paid. 6,000 is more representative of the expense related to that. Tower represents the water tower, some electric and that's it. Well, number two, some electric, maintenance repairs and that's about it. The bulk of it comes from the water system itself where we have wages, things of that nature. And there aren't a ton of changes in the budget just because we aren't hitting it hard yet. There is a shift in monies for water meters. Otherwise, we're looking at 70,000 revenues over expenditures in the water fund for 2024 as it sits currently. Sewer major highlights, a lot of the similars, adjusting down revenue from property taxes, I'll talk about that in a little bit when we get over to the long-term view. Added that state fee collection, similar to water, adjusted down the sewer access charge, similar to the water access charge just because revenues haven't been what they look, haven't been what they have been in the past. Also reducing the biosolids disposal, that, the amount we do for that. We've gotten more efficient in how that's done and that's resulted in less trips and all, less trips that we've been needing to take for that. And the guy's been doing a good job on that, increasing electrical cost for the wastewater treatment facility because it's been under budgeted. And then reducing the wastewater treatment facility and system capital expenditures, as you'll see here shortly. So as we flip over to the sewer fund, similar to water. This right here, this has been something I was thinking of last year when I was looking at this. So right now, the sewer fund does not cover, the sewer fund revenues do not cover the debt service of the sewer debt. And that was because years ago, built the improvements, expecting a big boom and it just didn't happen. So the general fund has been helping shoulder that, the property taxes have been helping shoulder that. The final payment is made in 2024. So that's the last year of payment in 2025, the big payment stop. And that's actually entirety of the debt for the sewer. But that's also partially where we come back if we do the wastewater treatment facility upgrades. Part of that funding source is reissuing debt in the sewer fund. It won't be to the level where the general fund needs to subsidize it or transfer funds. It'll, the sewer fund will need to carry their specific portion just because I don't want to have a situation again where we're raising property tax dollars to pay for a sewer issuance. Don't want to make that, do that again or do that twice. So this number right here, the 94,500, that's 100,000 less than was originally called out for to be put in by the property taxes. And I'm proposing reduce that by 100,000 to make transition, smoother transition out of the debt service. The sewer fund is sitting on a lot of money, about 2.2 million dollars. It'll continue to grow money into next year as we get towards the project. It can sustain a $100,000 hit without skipping a beat. And this has nothing to do with fraud or anything like that, the hits that we, we saw there. I was thinking about this last year as I was looking at, like, holy cow, it's really eating that.
We've talked about it in previous councils that our goal would be that it's self-sufficient and not having to be levied on top. So I'm, I think this is a positive move that we've been talking about as councils for years when we were doing all our like rate studies, as we eventually wanted to get away from that and be more like the water fund where it has to be fully funded by certain, by the usage.
And when we get to the long-term part and we'll wrap up with that, we're here shortly. You'll see this all tie together as we bring it up at the high level. Otherwise, penalties and interest, it's just adjusting thing here, the sewer access charge, similar to the water access charge. There, getting adjusted, debt service. This is the final year in 2025, this all goes away. So $350,000 where the debt service goes away each year until we need to reissue again, but that'll be far better calculated. Sewer lift stations, adjusting there for electric utilities and repairs and maintenance on items. Sewer treatment plant, here's where the biosolids disposal, we just haven't spent that much in years. It's really, it's really more than that 25-ish, 25,000 to 30,000. But again, being on the high side, just in case, still brings it down 10 grand. Electric utilities were under fun, under budgeted. So it was around 41,000 for 2022, so we're making sure that's caught up. Testing and lab services, making sure that's commensurate. And then here's where your capital outlay, we just don't have as much planned for sewer as we're gearing up for the bigger items. So that continues to decrease there. For the system itself, adjustments in personnel costs, otherwise not a ton of changes in here. Except where we mentioned, here's the other item for capital outlay, the inflow and infiltration. $60,000 was budgeted each year because there were some slip lining that was done to some older mains that were still in decent condition. So slip lining is basically when they coat the insides with a, kind of a hard rubberized lining. And it extends the life of the sewer main, it's a cheaper option than having to dig down and replace the entirety of it. It's really good if you don't have a lot of breaks and sags and things like that, but it's still older pipe, extends its life. We've been putting 60,000 in here for the last four years, so 20, 21, 23, 19, 20, 21. Four years, it's four years. It's how we're getting to the end as the numbers start getting mixed up. That's when I know I need to quit. So there's monies built up in the sewer fund already to do slip lining. Like these years, no slip lining was done. And the previous two years, slip lining wasn't done, so it's just been building in the reserves. So we're just taking that out because at some point we can do the slip lining and we don't need to continue budgeting for it. And there's only final segments that we need to do and Kyle's working on getting us those segments that we should look at slip lining, so we can knock that out at this point. So we're going from operating in the black to operating into the red on this. This represents that 100, this is what, $64,000 negative. Again, we're reducing by that 100 grand, that means this is going to slip into the red for a year. This is not into the future because your debt service is falling off and that'll jump it way back into the positive. On that, let's see, can even show you because I was curious. It's a little outside the scope of this, but I did do up kind of a mock 2025 budget, some really rough numbers. And this eliminates the debt service. Really jumps into the positive and that's if it keeps your rates the same and all that. So I wanted to have an idea of my head of what this might look like, but this, we'll have to tweak this for 2025. But that's kind of the scale you're talking about and the swing of things. So. And then real quick, highlights, storm sewer is even easier. There's no major adjustment in revenues and there's increased expenditures for engine, engineering. That's for the wetlands management. So the engineering is entirely wetlands management and then increase in capital expenditures. And as we look at the storm sewer, storm sewer is the easiest out of all, there's all your revenues. It basically comes from stormwater. Basically comes from stormwater fees and that's about it. When we get to the expenses, this is all of them. Uh, you have the engineering here and a hundred percent of that is for the wetlands management you guys are doing to produce those credits so you can sell them to gain the revenue from them. And then in capital outlay, uh, public works committee is having talks about um sonaring all of the ponds. We had a company go out and they can sonar storm ponds. And what that does is it gives us a report that tells us exactly how much muck is in the storm ponds. We had an assessment done uh in twenty twenty one, and that was an assessment study done on the storm ponds for the inlets and outlets and the maintenance that needs to be done with them. This is more for the depth of the pond themselves. Because a lot of those ponds have been there for coming up on twenty years. And our stormwater management policy says that when you hit fifty percent filled, you should look at dredging them. Dredging is not a cheap endeavor. And if we don't know how deep any of these things are, how can we rank prioritize the listing to figure out how much we need to put away to dredge these things when they fill up? So for about twenty thousand dollars, we can have all the ponds and there's forty of them roughly. Have them also in our, it'll give us the depth profile and all of them will tell us exactly how full they are. The contours of the whole thing. We can take that and then we can rank order the depth of all the ponds. That'll give us a priority ranking order of which ones need focus first and which ones may not have filled up so fast so they can be pushed to a future year of dredging. And that will then allow us to budget funds of here's how much we should dredge for this year and into the future. So that'd be a very helpful tool to flesh that all out. So with that, then, so that's uh, the high overview of the budget. Um, for the primarily long term forecast, I want to say this is not meant as a crystal ball. It's not set in stone. This is a living fluid document that we're going to be changing as things goes on and as conversations update things. But it gives us a little bit of a glimpse in what this looks like. It conceptualizes those future levies based upon potential notable factors. And we're really focused on the high level stuff between the capital improvements, the debt and the general fund levy. So I'll bring up this spreadsheet. Do we look at it? So the first section up here is going to be our capital items. Second is debt. And then third brings them all together. Since general fund is very straightforward here. We don't need to go into super depth on that. So in looking up here, first year of twenty twenty one out to twenty twenty eight. These are actuals we budget in future years are actuals for those years. You can see this was the year we pumped a bunch into streets as we were looking at the public works and the Millen overlay project. Thankfully asphalt prices came in great. So that really stabilized. Um, so looking at preliminary for twenty twenty four, hundred thousand for fire department, back to a hundred thousand for streets. Parks and rec gets the fifty thousand. And then in here, you'll see, these are the two bringing up that we talked about before. We use, we were budgeting money for the public works building here. And that was a hundred grand. Well, that's going to be done. So we don't need that anymore. This is uh, for sidewalk replacement. This is where the talks began of what do we do about the asphalt trail? That's uh, getting pretty old and decrepit and having some issues. And we had talked about the cost of doing that. And one of the potential ways to do that was you budget money every year and you knock out chunks. We would figure out which sections are the worst. Rank order priority, rank them about which needs to be handled first as the worst. And each year you knock off a hundred thousand dollars worth until you got them all redone. Now, if you redid them as concrete, concrete will last thirty, forty, fifty years, taken care of. So you're looking at ten years worth of capital improvements to get them all done. But after that, they're going to be done for a number of years afterwards. A potential, this is something you want to shift to something else. We can have those conversations as well. I'm just putting in scenarios at this point. Again, it's not a crystal ball. It's not saying, hey, let's do this. It's gives us an idea of what this would look like. And then when we get to the bottom, how it affects overall taxes. So you can see the total capital levy here with those additions. Oh, I'm sorry. The four thirty five fund, touch real quick on that. The four thirty five fund has been the general dip in fund for when you need to buy like a plow or a truck or do improvements to city hall like that. And not a ton of money goes into it, but money comes out of it. And eventually, if nothing goes back in, it'll run dry. So what I'd like to do with this fund is give it some more purpose. And if you remember when we were looking at the general fund in the community center, where we had that fifty grand that got taken out and then the streets that got taken out. This is where we sock. So we had fifty grand coming out and then we had about twenty grand coming out, putting forty grand away each year into this. So this is where you'd buy your lawn mowers, a pickup truck. Eventually a snowplow, things of that nature. And we build up this fund so that we don't have to budget for it in the general fund. So it gives this fund a little bit more purpose. It's more of our general capital equipment catchall and that. So threw in a place old number at forty for consideration on that as part of that. So then we get into the debt portion of this, and these are um, all of our debts that we currently have. And then also when they're dropping off. So you can see the flow on the totals here at the bottom of how that's ebbing and flowing on that. Uh, the two thousand twenty three A bond, that's our Millen overlay. Two thousand twenty one B, that's the fourth street project, I believe. Two thousand twenty one A, this is the fire station. Two thousand twenty A, this was another street project, uh, sewer debt. This is the general fund that's covering the sewer debt. There's here's where you can see that one ninety four, and then it steps down and then it eventually drops off on that. Two thousand fifteen A, this was an equipment bond with some street improvements and two thousand fourteen. Slips off the top of my head, but it's done with. But since we have some history here, gives us a look at what has been and where it looks like it's going. This is where it brings it all together. When we get into twenty twenty four, so this is the number that we've got plugged in right now, and this will adjust as we go through the budget process. But for five, six, seven and eight coming out, this is just a five percent inflationary factor on it just to have a number in there. These will obviously change as we hit those budget seasons, but it gives you an idea of what that might look like potentially. This just totals up the capital levy. This totals up the debt service and it gives us our total levy that we would look at having. This figures gives you the uh, dollar change from year to year. So from twenty one to twenty two, it went up eighty seven. To twenty three, it went up one sixty three to twenty four, looking at going down one seventy five, again, down, down, and then stabilize out as debt stabilizes in there. This is the percent change in that. And this would be the predicted tax rate if our tax base stayed the same. I'm not putting any inflationary factors on what our tax mate base might be in the future. This assumes twenty twenty three market values. And what they, what the tax rate might look like in the future. Over here is some just doo. Some quick graphical representations of um, general funds in blue, capital levies in orange and debt services in gray. How those are looking over time. This is the total levy. So the combination of the three above and how those shift because the total levy is really what affects uh, how much property property owners pay. So you can see uh, twenty twenty three hit the peak and then looking at normalizing here over the next five years or so. There's a look at our total debt, splitting that one out. Now, if any new debt gets added in the future for some reason, that would come back on, but that's based on the debt we have so far. And true to my word, keeping it within an hour. That is my initial presentation. Uh, I will email you guys this draft budget so you can look at it at your leisure outside. If you got questions. You know how to get ahold of me, please do. More than happy to answer questions. Give feedback, why things are, look like that, um, or anything like that. So.
Great. Good job.
Cool. Looks good. As I have.
It's under an hour.
Get that fly.